Mayor Scott Tremblay.
Here.
Vice Mayor William Detmer.
Here electronically.
Councilwoman Jenny Sorrell.
Here.
Councilman Todd McClary.
Here.
Councilman Tom Kinsella.
Here.
City Attorney James Mathieu.
Here.
City Manager John Dute.
Here.
Motion to approve council minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This time we're going to move on to comments from the general public. This time I'd like to, by pass of the Lord, ask for additional time if there was some time donated by another citizen that's here, so I would ask them to skip.
Thank you, Mayor, and your patience. She has a chaplain, and all this going on, three minutes is kind of hard, so I just thank you for the grace on that. I just really want to thank the city again for picking up our cleanup. Man, what a blessing to be in the city. I mean, now we've got it all pulled back, now to get it out. But just thank the workers here for what they do. And I just really want to thank Linda Rodriguez and the committee for our "Meet Your Neighbor." That was good. I'd like to see more come out. As a pastor, I'll try to do that, and both of the chiefs to come out. It was a joy to be with y'all out the other night. I just appreciate that. Just going over some things coming up. September 25th is Care Fest, and I said for years, when somebody cares Tampa Bay, we network all over. I forget how many churches up in the upper part of the state by St. Augustine come out, but it's really a time that we want to connect with the city on what we can do and come out and serve to make things better. We've done everything from build wheelchair ramps, to trim hedges, to paint houses, so whatever, and that'll be September 25th. I'll be getting you more information on that. And appreciate our city manager meeting with us. We're still working on details for support for our backpack giveaway. We do want to be a blessing, particularly for single moms. I remember one year a single mom had to get all these kids, and her car broke down, the wrecker pulled her to backpack giveaway, and we blessed her and took care of her, and she said she don't know how she would have made it without it. So anybody that would like to help, they're about $10 apiece to stuff backpacks. Also, National Day of Prayer was a good support for the community. We had the sheriff out, was an encouragement. Got to pray for him, and Commissioner Noco, and Starkey, and Fitzpatrick. So really appreciate the city government, let us come to the government center and set everything up, so we really had a good thing in the community there. So just thanks for being a part of Port Ritchie and Pasco County. If you would look, I have these that I presented to you, and I'll tell you, what we need in our nation are people of influence that use their influence. As you see, it's a call for men of all ages to be God's man in the home, at the workplace, and all aspects of life. So we're trying to get the men in the area to go. All the information's there. I don't know, you may know some of these. I like what Judge Vance Day says, "The president's promise keepers." Vance Day's "A modern-day profile and courage who strongly believes in helping to raise a generation of leaders equipped to address an ever-changing world." And of course, you see the Super Bowl winner twice there, Clyde Christensen and Michael Clayton. So that's something that's going on in the Bay Area that would be great if some of you men could use your influence there. Also, in our fellowship hall, if you could write this down, May 19th, there's a free luncheon, and Terry Kemble, which has worked in Hillsborough County and diffused the girls going in boys bathrooms, and boys and girls. And I don't know if you know what's happening in our nation, but we need to protect our families. Terry going to Tallahassee has got some things passed with the flood of family coalition, but he will be here right now because of the perversion in schools and the LGBTQ movement. And I love all people, but some things aren't family-ordered. He will be sharing, they're in 10 counties now, and be going to begin to try to network across the state of Florida to bring, how should I say, more a stable and less confusing thing to our children. If you've been to the school board meetings with what happened the last couple of years and what's brought on, I mean, it's really, really not good. So we need to be people of influence for the next generation. We really need to stand up, and I look at all y'all as people of influence, and we need to influence Port Ritchie, but connect and go beyond that. So thank you, just pray and ask the Lord what. It's a privilege to serve. I would like to be able to do more, and thank you, Mayor, for your graciousness and the time. Just great opportunities coming up, okay? Thank every one of you. Lord bless you.
Thank you, Pastor Lord. That's all that we had, signed up from the general public, other than, I think Mr. Mueller was signed up, but you wanted to reserve your time for after the city manager speaks.
Just like it says it.
Okay. Does anyone else want to speak? Seeing no hands, at this time, we're going to move on, and I wanted to invite Mr. Dute to speak at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me go through the update on ongoing projects. I spoke with the County Restore Act official this past week. Treasury has requested that we, being the county, conduct another public input session, so the county is going to put that together, advertise it, and gather another 45 days of public comment on the dredging project. Unofficially, they said the project looks approvable, looks good, but going to wait for the public input, and then they'll make their final decision after that 45 days. On the Coty River Landing project, the CRA board will hear from heirs in their meeting this evening, and looking forward to that. Some updates on staffing, we'll fill the HR specialist position tomorrow afternoon. I had one more interview, one more candidate, recent retiree from the military, and I really wanted to hear from her. She's got a lot of experience, so we're going to interview her tomorrow, and then shortly thereafter, make a decision. The CRS permitting position and the Public Works positions are advertised, and we're taking resumes on those. We are interviewing this week for Public Works positions, and I'll be interviewing for CRS permit position next week. The part-time IT position will be posted this week, and we're developing a position description for a CRA grant manager position. City cleanup, as you've heard, is underway, so bring your stuff to Public Works. That's been ongoing. The details are on the website and on Facebook, and I want to thank the Public Works guys for making that happen. Guidance from Treasury came out today on ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. There's 151 pages of guidance for me to get through, and up to about page 50. The National League and the Florida League have both put out their own eight or 10-page guidance. There's a lot more detail, a lot more requirements than what the initial indication was, so it's not going to be as easy as, hey, just give us money and we'll figure out what to do with it. So, but that guidance is out, and I'll have more information for you in two weeks. With budget, Finance Director and I are meeting with department heads later this week and go over their initial draft budget, so that process is moving forward, and you're going to hear from the Finance Director and CRA, or CLA this evening. The old post-speed limit issue, the report, I've got the data from Chief Robinson, compiling my report, and you'll have that in your packet in two weeks. Did meet with the Pasco County Economic Growth Manager yesterday. That was a good meeting. He's connected us with the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Commission. They've got some Recovery Act money that they need to spend on planning, and so I've visited with their director this morning, and we're going to get together in a Zoom meeting with his team and see if we can brainstorm some ideas. They've done a good deal of work for Newport, envisioning their downtown area and several other communities in their six-county region. So looking forward to visiting with the region, the Planning Commission, and brainstorm some of our ideas for Port Ritchie. Staff and I met with PNC representatives, that's our bank. They had a lot of good ideas about ways we can save money, expedite our processes, and even some enhanced services that they have to offer for us. And Rachel is working with the PNC representatives to streamline some of those processes. And I had my monthly meeting with the Newport Ritchie City Manager. She and I are working on a couple of projects and ideas together. As those kind of come to fruition, I'll have more information for you, but that's an ongoing monthly meeting and developing a strong relationship. I think that's going to be beneficial for both communities. That's all I have. I stand for your questions.
If I can open with the questions. I know probably one of the bigger issues that's been ongoing within the city was the audit for the CRA, and I wanted to know if there was an update on that audit.
I believe we are caught up on all the questions. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel and Mr. Mathieu. They've been voluminous, but I think we're caught up at this point.
But we're still getting more questions in, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes. It's been three days since we got the last set of questions, three or four days?
Looking for backup for expenditures and bid documents and things that we have to take time to find.
Thank you. I'm just going to open to the rest of the panel for any questions. Mr. Detmer, did you have anything?
Yeah, I did have one item. I'd like to follow up on the meeting with the county in regards to the Nick's Park boat ramp projects.
I did discuss that with the, I've forgotten her title, the grants manager with the county. She's investigating. I made her aware of our interest in ongoing projects, and she told me she would be looking into additional funding opportunities.
Thank you.
Anything?
I'm just a former tenant with a speed report on a boat.
It'll be in your packet in two weeks. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any? Is there any further end date or anticipated end date for the CRA audit, or is that still, they're saying two weeks, two weeks, two weeks?
That's probably the best answer I've gotten. Unfortunately, no. I don't have a better date than whenever they get done with it.
I believe that concludes comments from the city manager. However, I did have a citizen that wanted his three minutes now, so I'd like to invite David Mueller to the podium.
Thank you, Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. I've been observing, you know, a, let's just say, a lot of new hires here in the city. I know we had some tight budget constraints last year. We have yet to receive a financial report of where we think we're going to land end of year, and I'm just wondering if it's prudent to continue to hire people without some kind of an outlook of where we expect our, you know, actuals to land at the end of the year. And I know the information that was presented in the package, I believe, was related to another section of this meeting, but I noticed that there still is no outlook of where we're going to land. And I think it's prudent and good business acumen to be able to forecast where we're going to land the end of the year and address that with the expenditures that we've been incurring. We went and raised the citizens' tax rates last year by one point to accommodate some of these anomalies, and I think it was anomalies related to just bad business practice. And I don't want to see this organization fall into the same footsteps of the past. So hopefully, you guys will take a fiduciary role and hold somebody's feet to the fire and try to get an outlook and determine where we're going to land the end of the year. I know we've got some things, people new, people, you know, trying to get on top of things and understand the workings of this organization, but I think it's time that somebody starts asking some hard questions, and if you're not prepared to, I certainly am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. That's all I have for comments from the city manager for the public commentary, unless anyone else has any additional comments. Seeing no hands, we're going to move on to the comments from myself. Come on up. Can you please state your name and address?
Sure. My name is Amanda Cornwell, and my address is 8622 Candido Lane. I just signed a lease in the Abilah Bay complex down the street here. I'm a widow. My daughter is young, she's about to start driving, and I've literally just signed a lease and moved in a week ago and noticed that there's a pathway on the property in the corner that the complex doesn't own, that's city-owned, and there are deteriorated mattresses and people in and out of the property. The entrance to my unit is on the side, and I didn't realize that when I signed the lease. So I just wanted to bring it to somebody's attention. It feels very unsafe for us to be there, and I'm not sure if anybody's aware of the pathway that's in the back that goes from the corner back through to the Walmart. It cuts through. There's a fence where Walmart is to the end, but then it's open, and that goes right back into the complex on city property.
Thank you for your input. We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Any other commentary from the public? Seeing no hands, at this time, we'll move on to comments from myself and the council. I'll start with Vice Mayor Detmer.
I have no additional comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Sorrell.
I'm good, thank you.
We've got a lot to do tonight, so I'm going to pass.
I have no comments. None at this time.
Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to any comments from boards and committees. No one was signed up. I do see several people here that are on boards and committees. Any show of hands, any updates from boards and committees? Ms. Rodriguez, welcome, come on up.
Hi. We have Cleaner Park on June 22nd. We're going to do Brasher Park. Thank you, Sal. So we'll do Brasher Park on the 9 o'clock, on the 22nd. We did have "Meet Your Neighbor," and it was very successful. We had a great time. And the next one will be the first Wednesday. We had Tuesday this past time to visit with Cinco de Mayo, but in June, it will be on Wednesday, and it will be at Gildogs. So we look forward to seeing you then.
What's that date? Do you know?
No.
Okay.
I think it's the 7th, but the first Wednesday, I'm sorry, I don't remember. It might be the 9th, I don't know.
Ms. Rodriguez, do you mean May 22nd?
Yes, May 20th, yes.
It'd be June 9th.
The first Wednesday of June is June 2nd.
June 2nd, okay. And then it's May 22nd for Brasher Park?
Correct.
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion of... ...agenda.
I'll say a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any need for any discussion on any of these items? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda, motion passes. We're going to move on to council business. First item up is 7729 Grand Boulevard, the commercial dock boat ramp and boat slip approvals. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Dute to give opening comment on this particular item.
Now, the permit requires your review before it can actually be issued. Staff has reviewed it, found it to be in order, and so it comes to you for your consideration.
With that, we're going to open for discussion and/or motion. I took a look at this. There's a different standard for commercial waterways than there is for residential. And the standard, basically, in a nutshell, says that you're not supposed to obstruct anyone else's throughway or waterway. And I reviewed all the information, and I didn't see where there were any problems with this particular permit. It's my understanding, the recommendation is to grant it. After reviewing everything, I would agree with that as well, but I do want to pass it for comment and/or motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the commercial dock boat ramp and boat slip for 7729 Grand Boulevard.
Second.
Before we vote on this, I do see members of the public here. Nobody signed up for this, but would anyone like to speak before we put it to a vote? Seeing no hands, at this time, is there any need for any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, let's put it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item four, which is going to be a presentation by Pasco County Mosquito Control District, and I'm going to pass that to our city manager, Mr. Dute, for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received an email late this evening, just before the meeting. The presenter had a family emergency, would like to be rescheduled, so no additional input for that item.
Very well. We'll move on to item five. That's going to be the Clifton Larson Allen CLA financial report. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Dute, but what I was going to ask Mr. Dute to do in the introduction that wasn't typed up in the report that we received was a brief overview of CLA's involvement with the city and how we got to having them present the financial report.
Thank you. So CLA's been involved with the city long before I got here and has taken on a number of different roles for us, including some of the day-to-day operations when we literally were without a finance director, and have picked up the, I asked them to do an overview of our finances as our new finance director was getting her feet on the ground and kind of stand shoulder to shoulder with her, help her get up to speed as quickly as possible. Kim with CLA has been with us once a week, twice a week, and when we were without a finance director, I asked her boss if we could have more of her time. They were gracious and willing to help us out with that. So I asked CLA to come in and give us a, basically, a state-of-the-budget address. Where are we right now? Are we ahead? Are we behind? Are we in trouble? Are we great? And that gives us some idea of where we're going for the next six months, and gives us some idea of what we need to build into our upcoming budget process. So they have done that, and Rachel has been intimately involved in that process, so if I may, I'd turn it over to Rachel and CLA representatives. Thank you for being here.
Thank you again, Mr. Dute. Appreciate that, and a quick introduction. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Just for the record, my name is Lance Schmidt. I am a principal with Clifton Larson Allen, and I oversee our state local government practice for the state of Florida. So again, it's a pleasure to be here tonight and to present to you guys tonight. As Mr. Dute had said, you know, we've been here kind of on and off over recent months. We were kind of here a while back and had some transition of our own over at CLA, and I had really gotten involved back in July of 2020, and then stopped for a short period of time, and then Mr. Dute came on board, and, or shortly before, Mr. Dute came on board, and we re-engaged to kind of help out during some interim periods. So got a few things that we want to, one, appreciate the opportunity to introduce who CLA is and what we've been doing, so if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those. But in addition to that, I want to just give you a quick update on a couple of different financial matters that we've been working on along with Rachel, your city manager, today. So first thing I want to do, not the CRA audit, but your actual external audit, which is due in June 30th of 2021. We have been working with the auditors on both preparing the financial statements and getting through all the different audit requests that they have. Again, I'm not your external auditor, but the feedback that we've received, that Rachel's received from the auditors, is that this year's audit was much cleaner, which is good news. They only had one adjustment, which is also really good news. What that means is the information you've been looking at is fairly accurate throughout the time you've been looking at it. Now, again, we, you know, when I say that, keeping in mind that some of the financial information you received, we were kind of doing some cleanup work when we were re-engaged in, you know, later in the year. So, you know, we've been working diligently to try to, you know, make sure we've got as accurate a set of books as we can. Also, in addition to that process, again, it has been a pleasure to work with your new finance director, Rachel. CLA, if you're not familiar with us, we do have about 130 offices all over the country. Seven of those are here in the state of Florida, so this is, you know, I'm a graduate of Pasco Hernando Community College, so this is, you know, this is home to be in Pasco, so we know the area and are very invested in the community. But it was also nice having a big company that, when Mr. Dute was interviewing Rachel, we were able to call and actually, just so happens, because we specialize in state and local government, we were actually able to call another principal, one of my fellow principals, and make sure Rachel was good and had glowing things to say, and that's been our experience as well, working with Rachel as well. And so one of the things that we've also wanted to do, and really, this is a product of, that Rachel has been really instrumental in putting together is the financial package that you have in front of you, which includes budget to actual numbers. You know, again, we've kind of assisted Rachel in this interim period to kind of get things going and make sure that, you know, everything's reconciled timely and you've got the most accurate financial picture that you can receive. And so what I'd like to do is just kind of go over some of the highlights of some of the, again, the more significant funds here at the city. So the first one, and you should have a few different things in front of you that were in the board package, obviously, the budget to actual for all the key major funds, and then also a kind of a summary of the fund balances. So just want to, again, just do a quick recap of those and then answer any questions that you guys may have. So as it relates to the general fund, what's important to look at there, again, this is six months' worth of data since the city's fiscal year begins October 1, ends on September 30, and so we'd expect that we've received roughly 50% of the revenue, and you're right at 48%. Keeping in mind that, you know, as we take a look at that, there are going to be certain grants that maybe are not funded, you're going to be kind of front-loaded on your ad verum, that's going to come in, you know, early in the year. But when we look at all of that combined, obviously, you know, the budget is the city's best guess at the time. This was adopted shortly after, you know, COVID became a thing, so there was some uncertainty as well as to what some of the revenue sources would look like. But again, you can see a kind of a recap there. Two big budget line items that are under budget right now are the FRDAP Nick's Park, which is a grant, and also the Restore Act proceeds. So again, we'll be looking to get funding for those projects in the future. Kind of shifting gears and taking a look at some of the expenditures related to the general fund. If you take a look at that, you'll see we're coming in right at 35% of the total budget. One thing I do want to mention with how the city has been doing their budget process, and it's something that we've been talking with Rachel about, we didn't prepare this budget, this was prepared by someone else. Currently, you're going to see a line down there called contingencies at the very bottom of each one of these funds. What that number essentially represents is the amount of fund balance that's expected to be carried forward into next year's budget. It's listed as a contingency. There's a couple of different ways to report that. Some look at it as contingency more as a, hey, let's take 10% of our budget and have it, you know, as a case we have some overage. Some individuals like to, or cities like to have that listed out as, you know, carry forward the next year. So just keep in mind, when you see that contingency number, that's not necessarily that the city is expecting that they're going to be over budget by $1.6 million, but rather, that really is to carry forward, and it really helps basically balance the budget between your revenues. And it really helps basically balance the budget between your revenues and expenditures. So, again, just want to keep that in mind. I know Rachel's been batting some ideas off of us as to maybe, you know, should we present that a little bit differently next year or, you know, highlight that differently? And so, looking at the general fund being at 35% of budget, again, since we are right at 6%, or I'm sorry, six months through the year, you'd expect that to be, again, near 50%. I like to back out that contingency number because, again, that contingency number does somewhat overstate it, overstate the total expenditures that you're really expected to incur. And so, when you back that off, you're still well below where your budgeted expenses are currently kind of projected to be or where we'd expect those to be. You are over a little bit on your administrative and finance, again, just due to some of the transition you've had in your city manager department, you know, with having interim city manager, of course, Mr. Duke coming on board, and then some of the interim financial help that you've had, both from CLA and other consultants earlier in the year. So, again, all in all, when we take a look at the fund balance for the general fund, it's very healthy. So, plenty of reserves in the general fund.
So, the question that I had for you is, that was what was budgeted, but it doesn't show what we're actually spending. Is that what we're actually spending or is that just what was budgeted?
Yeah, so the very first column, you'll see for the revenues, it'll say received year-to-date, and then down below, it'll say actual year-to-date. The actual year-to-date column are your actual expenditures for the first six months of the year. So, the $2,351,000 is what you have as actual expenditures in your general fund for the first six months of the year.
One quick question. Another big line item in this expenditure, which could be theoretically throwing off of that percentage, was $902,002 grants. Is that the Restore Act grant or is that something? Because that would obviously very much throw off your overall percentage.
Yeah, if you add together the two grants and also the community development block grant for $35,000, that does tie to that $902,000. So, you've received none of the revenue, but you've also incurred none of the expense. So, good question.
So, I guess the question, the important question that I have is, number one, are we on budget in terms of what we spend either over some or on some? But overall, are we on budget or are we over budget in your findings?
Yes. You're currently under budget for your total expenditures. So, again, what...
Is that subtracting the grants and the other things that we're not planning on spending?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, the $1,000, the $1,072,925, that is what's projected to be in reserves as we roll forward to next year?
That is correct, yes.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to clarify something.
Sure, sure. And again, I'd like to tell you that anytime you do a budget, it's 100% accurate, but it is our best guess at the time. So, again, that's where the city is expecting to be. Good question. Any other questions on the general fund? If not, I'll move forward to the CRA fund.
I'll ask a question, and maybe Rachel can jump in. Looking at all this, what is giving you a heartburn that we need to keep an eye on?
Well, like Lance suggested, we need to do a budget transfer for administrative and finance. They're overspent, mostly due to professional services that we had hired at the time. So, only some transfers from contingencies. And I estimate it was about $80,000 for administration, and I believe around $50,000 for finance. So, that would come out of that contingency line.
And what did we do to get an additional 1,500% in revenue in the miscellaneous fund?
That actually needed to be reclassed to the ad valorem taxes. It was input and wrong, so I reclass it. So, it's correct going forward in April.
That's upsetting, but understandable.
Any other questions on the general fund? All right, hearing none, we'll continue on to the CRA fund. So, we take a look at the CRA fund. You can see we are just below our projected ad valorem budget of $1,010,000. Actual received is $834,000. Again, you know, as we kind of dug into those numbers, and again, CLA did not prepare this budget, but as we looked at it, it was really just an over, you know, a higher budget number than really what it should have been. So, again, not concerning there. It's just, you know, the big thing that we want to make sure is that if we've received $834,000 and we have roughly $914,000 of fund balance carried forward from last year, we just want to make sure that we're living within our means on the expenditures. And so, we need to take a look at the expenditures for the CRA. You can see that current expenditures to date is $320,000. And I know you guys have talked a lot about the CRA fund and different projects that could be going on in the CRA fund. And so, again, expect that money to be used eventually. But, you know, at this point in time, this is, these are the current expenditures within the CRA fund. Any questions on that?
So, in other words, you're expecting a $1.6 million carry forward on the CRA fund through next year?
That was what was budgeted, and if you take a look at where we're at to date, and again, I don't know all of the projected expenditures that are expected over the last six months of the year. The way things are currently, you know, looking right now, if we had the same last six months as we do the first six months, you're probably even going to have, you know, even more than that being carried forward to next year. Any other questions there? If not, we'll move forward to the Penny for Pasco Fund. Again, you can see what has been budgeted there. We've got roughly $1 million carried forward here. You can see your total revenue, Penny for Pasco is about $141,000, and your expenditures are actually much higher than that, $630,000. However, you had a significant amount, you know, close to $1 million that was carried forward from last year. The biggest expenditure there is a new fire truck that was paid for using Penny for Pasco funds. And so, when you look at that budget and say, okay, well, first six months of the year, we're already used 89% of the funds there. Obviously, there's not expected to be another, at least to my knowledge, not expected to be another fire truck purchased in the second half of the year. So, again, it's completely, you know, normal and expected that you would see, CISA use, you know, carry forward funds from the prior year for current year purchases.
In the discretionary sales surtaxes, we had budgeted $400,000. We collected roughly 35% of it. Is there any inkling, and this is going beyond maybe Port Ritchie, what the anticipated total recovery is, given where we are economically as a country? Are we, would we expect to only collect about 70% of that total budget at this point or...?
I would need to go back and look at last year's numbers a little bit closer because if I... And I hate to speculate without seeing it, but my speculation is that that budget number is very high for Port Ritchie. I can tell you, and Mr. Duke, feel free to jump in here. I know with Florida League of Cities publishing a lot of good information that's out there, we are seeing a small dip, but certainly nowhere near a 70% dip in discretionary sales surtax. And the nice thing is, as your city manager mentioned, we just had some new treasury guidance related to the new ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan funds that are out. They've specifically identified, or we'll say specifically identified, but given us more guidance on how those funds can be used to recoup lost revenue. That was a big unknown for a lot of cities as to what that looks like and what we could use that for. And the nice thing is, they're looking at, basically, you have to look back at your last full year of discretionary sales surtax revenue, compare that to, you know, what your decrease was, and the money that you receive for those American Rescue Plan funds can be used for that. Basically, it goes straight into, would go straight into this fund. And again, I'm speaking from roughly one day's worth of knowledge since it was published yesterday. Some point during the day, we discovered that, and so, we're still working through that, and we expect there'll be more FAQs released from treasury on that, so.
The question that I had for you is, we, as a city, elected to finance our police vehicles over a period of time. Is that money calculated in that we're going to be taking out or is that not calculated into our overall budget?
The payment for the leased vehicles is 10-1, so it actually...
I didn't hear you.
The payment for the leased vehicles is 10-1, so it would come out of next year's fiscal budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on Penny for Pasco? All right, if not, well, we will move on. Taking a look at your water and sewer fund, you can see, again, when we take a look at the revenue totals here, cash balance forward and also the balance forward in those Florida fit accounts is basically, you know, prior year reserves that are pulling forward. So, we're looking at close to $2 million carry forward from last year. And so, if we were to back that out, we'd be closer to, you know, 3.5 million. And so, we're much more than 25% of the way to collecting the revenue. We're probably closer to 40% on that number. Just indicative on the biggest two line items you have there, your sewer revenue and your water revenue. And so, when we take a look at your expenses, very similar there as well. If you were to back off the contingency number, you would see that we're living well within the budget there as well as it relates to the water and sewer fund. Any questions specifically on that?
This is, I believe, our enterprise fund, correct? So...
That's correct.
We want to make more money. How do we do that?
That's a great question. That's right. And that's, and really, that's, you know, going into next year's budget, I think one of the things that I would, you know, highly recommend is, and I haven't necessarily asked all of these questions because it's a great question. Obviously, the last time you guys had a water revenue, you know, utility study to find out, obviously, how you compare it to, you know, other local municipalities, what's your capital needs assessment, you know, what does that look like going forward? Are the, is the infrastructure good? If that hasn't been done in the last five years, I'd recommend that as well. Taking those two things into consideration, then I'd say also, let's take a look at, you know, again, where you're at in the marketplace. You know, you don't want to obviously price yourself too high or too low. You want to make sure you're being fiscally responsible. And then ultimately, you know, if you're looking or budgeting for a surplus there, that's, again, why the council gets, you know, the fortunate ability to kind of set that, set those rates and how much that's going to basically fund, you know, general fund or other activities, you know, within the city. So, again, certainly, that can happen, and you want to make sure at a minimum you're covering your costs in an enterprise fund, which you are. But the other piece of that, which doesn't really show up in the financial statements, is, you know, are you, are you not only, you know, covering your cost that you're incurring today, but are you also set up for the future for, you know, growth and...
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements, et cetera, which is not something that necessarily goes into your books. That's more of an off-book, forward-looking projection that you would want to make sure you're, you know, keeping your finger on the pulse of, you know, how the water utility is doing, so.
And that would be part of the recommended study that you're talking about?
It would be, yes. Yep.
Thank you. That's all I had for you on this one.
Yep, certainly. If there's no other questions on the water and sewer utility fund, we'll take a look at the stormwater fund. Let's take a look at the stormwater fund. Again, you can see roughly 43%, which is consistent with your water and sewer revenue being at 40 and 42%. And so, again, I don't necessarily have the institutional knowledge of preparing this budget, but it seems like the same assumptions used to project water revenue and sewer revenue were the same for projecting the stormwater fund. I would expect, obviously, those to kind of, you know, no pun intended, flow the same direction, which they are, which is good. And taking a look at the expenditures, you know, there are, you're under budget, but there are, again, some other budgeted expenditures. But again, living within your means because you still have that balance forward, you know, of roughly $285,000 from the prior year to fund those expenses. So, again, not overly concerned with that. But again, kind of a similar point I had on stormwater revenue, want to make sure that some type of study is being done, you know, forward-looking projection that say, hey, are we collecting enough revenue, not for today, but also for those future, you know, capital needs? And with that, I do want to, again, just publicly say thank you for the commission for helping, and I actually have one other report here as well. But I did just want to thank Kim Pobloti as well. She's in the back of the room. She didn't run away, so that's good. She's still there. Kim has really been instrumental in working with Rachel and Mr. Duke on, just again, kind of, you know, kind of filling the gap when, you know, there was a period of time where you kind of needed some assistance. Our role here at CLA is not necessarily to camp out and be here forever, but obviously, you want to help us, you know, as long as you need that assistance. So, we're certainly working with the city on, again, what their future plans are moving forward. But I did want to just, one last report too, and Rachel, was this in, did this make it to the...
It was a handout.
It was a handout. Okay, so everyone has this. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't talking about something that no one had seen. Rachel did prepare a fund balance report as well, just to kind of show you where the city's fund balance currently is sitting at, which I wasn't going to go over in great detail, but you can see, in summary, what I will say is that, you know, the general fund, CRA, Penny for Pasco Utility Fund are all very, very healthy. When we take a look at Stormwater Fund, it's the only fund that doesn't maybe have a ton of excess. But again, I'm not, can't, I can't really say if that's a good or bad thing until we know exactly what the needs are going forward, you know, in that fund. But again, one of your smaller funds compared to, you know, the general fund and utility fund. So, with that, if there's any questions, I would be glad to answer those or turn it over to Rachel or Kim to help out with any questions.
I wanted to go back to the general fund.
Yes.
Because I imagine there was a period of time you had to come back in and shift some things around from the past administration, there was kind of a gap there. Has that all been done and is all that complete in your estimation?
Yes. To the best of my knowledge, and when I say best of my knowledge, I really mean Kim and Rachel. We talked about that before the council meeting tonight. And also, I wanted to give you a quick audit update as well because the audit update, obviously, going through September 30th resulted in very, like I said, only one adjustment and no, to my knowledge, no significant audit findings. They had a couple of recommendations, which, you know, to be honest, with all the turnover, we would expect there to be some recommendations. And so, yeah, certainly on the right path. Certainly, there's a couple of things I know that, you know, we're still trying to work out, just some challenges with the system and, you know, you know, some other things that I know that Rachel's still working on. But certainly, we're, you know, I think we're definitely on the right path and moving in the right direction. Again, could be some more changes, you know, could be some possibly, you know, more, you know, budget amendments going forward, just again, maybe moving between line items. I don't think there's anything major from conversations that we've had through city manager and your finance department that would say, you know, hey, there's a impending doom coming. There's nothing to our knowledge.
And I had probably a tougher question for you because one of my concerns isn't just what's happening in this budget year, but moving forward to next budget year is probably, is big a concern, if not bigger concern than where we're at now. Last year, one of the things that we had normally budgeted in the past that we did not was pay the money into the CRA fund, which was a significant amount of money. If we maintain this budget and we pay that money in as we're supposed to or that we probably need to look at doing, will we have the same, will we still be within the same budget this year as we are next year? Or next year as we are this year?
Sure. Rachel, Mr. Duke, do you, either one of you want to take that question or I can answer it the best I can?
Best you can.
That sounds good. Sounds good. You know, I think, I don't know the full, you know, it's a very good question. I think with a little more research, I could probably answer better, to be honest with you. I don't want to tell you something that is my best guess. I don't want to give you something that's accurate information. Yes, yeah.
Because I want to start planning for the budget. Year for next year. Have to address, council, this is paying that money in the CRA, making sure we're still within budget.
Sure. Correct.
In range. So, those were kind of three different concerns that I had moving forward for next budget year. And I think we're getting into where we're at. Different parts of the city, police, fire, et cetera. And, you know, obviously, I think we need to know that going into the next budget year so our different budget or department heads can make the changes that they need to change.
Yeah, and I, just so council is aware, we've had a lot of discussions about fund balance in the general fund and the CRA specifically. It, you, I just, we've had so many conversations, I just want to make sure, I kind of want to circle back. Mr. Duke, the team... to circle back, Mr. Duke and the team, and just make sure that we're, you know, you know, that any information I give you would be accurate and also consistent with, obviously, the direction the city is going, because there are some, again, there's some, you know, as you probably go into this next budget cycle, I'm sure Rachel's going to bring a lot of good ideas, or maybe different ways to look at things, that, you know, you may have more discussions on that, you know. And again, I think one of the things to also look at is, specifically with your general fund and your utility fund, you know, looking at that, projecting that forward, you know, a couple of years to see, okay, you know, based on what we're doing, where do we look like in, you know, 2023 as well, not just 2022? And so definitely recommend that as well during the budget process.
So I guess the question is, is that something we can have back in the future to answer some of those questions moving forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And I appreciate you answering the questions the best you can, and look forward to seeing you in the future. I didn't know if anyone else had any questions before you go.
We'll hear the question.
Vice Mayor, anything?
No, I do know, I'm having a little audio trouble, but I think most of the questions you actually asked, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Searle, anything? Back to you, Mr. Duke.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you again, and Kim and Rachel.
Thank you for all your hard work, everyone.
Thank you all.
And I think the next item that I had were department head reports. One of the things, I guess, before I turn that over and go into this. Mr. Mueller, come on up.
Thank you. Dave Mueller, 5439 Blue Point Drive. I still think back to the outlook, we're not getting a clear picture where we're going to land. This is something that I think as fiduciaries, as yourselves, and I appreciate CLA coming in and trying to present this, but I think we need to do a deep dive on where we think we're going to land at the end of the year. That's going to, that's going to drive what we're going to do in the budget. Last year, we had a one-point increase in our tax rates. Over the last year, housing market in this area has gone out of sight, which is also driving an increase to our revenue side for incremental taxes coming in. COVID windfall of the ARP, the number's been batted around about 1.2 million, should cover what the increase was that you levied to the residents. My suggestion and recommendation would be to let's look at what we actually assess the residents, look at where we're running, sounds like we're running favorable, although I don't see it, everything's balanced out. We take six months of actuals and plug in six, you know, whatever the budget was and subtract, and that's a plug for the next six months, that's not the way you budget and forecast. I'm sorry, I've never seen that before. But my expectation would be is, let's look at trying to get that rate back to a level that the residents can deal with. I understand that there's a lot of services in this city that provide, that are provided to the residents, but I think we owe it to them to do a good job looking at the spends and in going into this next budget, we need to zero-base every position, every expenditure, so that we justify why we're spending it and how it's going to help the city. I think there's a lot of opportunity here, and I think that would be a worthwhile effort to try to achieve some kind of reduction in our tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the CLA presentation? So, you know, hands, we'll move on to the next item, and it was the department head reports. Before I turn that over, one of the things that I see coming up is, kind of, our meetings are going to get longer, and some of these other items are going to be in our council business. And what I wanted to know, or at least potentially propose, is whether or not, since we were able to read a lot of the department head reports, that we can reserve the department head reports part of council business, just any specific questions, rather than going through everything that's in the report, and it may kind of pare down time-wise the meetings. And I didn't know how the rest of the council felt about that, or if they want each one of the department heads to put on a presentation.
I think the question then comes from my perspective and from the citizens, are all these department heads posted online or easily accessible? Or is this the only opportunity that they get to?
We can sure make them available if they're not, I'm not sure that they are.
As part of the agenda, they're already posted online on our website, so anyone, all they have to do is, you know, select that calendar, select the agenda, and it appears, and they can look at the entire agenda and everything that was on it.
And the reason I was saying that is because everyone can read a lot of what's being presented, and what I'd like to reserve the department head slot for is really for questions, so we can pare down information that may or may not be clear in the reports. Does anyone have an issue with that, if we handle it that way moving forward?
I don't have a question.
Okay. Councilwoman Searle?
I agree.
I don't have any problem with any of that. The reason why we were doing this was because so many of the citizens didn't know what was going on and didn't have the information available to them. So if we're going to make it publicly available to them, that where they can easily access it, I don't see any reason why we have to use the time here.
Okay. With that, what I'd like to do is just kind of change the format around and see if anyone had any specific questions for the department heads, because a lot of the reports are here, or do you guys want to present it for the last time today and then change the format in the next go-around? In other words, I guess, for the purposes of tonight, do you guys want to let them go ahead and give their reports, and then we'll change the format for the next cycle?
Honestly, it really doesn't matter, and, you know, I went over it, I have many questions, a couple of questions I did have, I spoke to.
Okay.
That department head.
Okay, very well. Do you have a preference for tonight?
I'm fine with just skipping the reports and asking questions.
Okay.
To that.
The only thing I would ask, because that's a lot of the questions that I hear from the citizens, they want to see or see what the police department's doing. Seems like that is the main interest, you know, the number of burglaries in the city, the thefts, so forth, but a lot of the comments I get personally is having a report from the police department.
One of the things I work on with staff, I know they're in, I know they're online in your packet with the agenda, but we may want to work on finding another way to present that on the website, so that it's clear, here's the department, here's the department head report with the date. And so I'll work with staff and see if we can parse that out in how we present it on the website, make it a little easier to get to. It's there, but it's buried in, you know, all the stuff that you have to go through, so we'll work on that.
Thank you.
I was going to open up. I was going to open up.
Item six, department head reports, just to.
Any questions or comments? Start with Mr. Vice Mayor Dimmer, if you have anything.
Mr. Mayor, I have no questions at this time, thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Searle, do you have anything?
I've read it all, and I'm okay. My only comment would be, while he's heard about the police department, I always hear about code enforcement, how, what are they doing, what is going on, and that sort of thing. So clarifying that report might be helpful to the citizens.
Okay.
I had some citizen inquiries for the building department slash code enforcement. It had to do with Whiskey River, and was it a dumpster that sits over, I guess, one of the properties? The question was whether or not that property is owned correctly for a commercial dumpster or not. And then number two, the second inquiry I had is, there's a fence that is kind of new, and it's up against where the roadway is coming in, whether or not that's a public easement that they put the fence kind of near or up against, or whether or not that's Whiskey, or Whiskey River's property.
And whether or not that was all. Those were the same words I was asking, and I didn't have the answer. So I wanted to pass that on.
The dumpster enclosure is being relocated next to the building, so that's in the process of being moved. That's in the process of being worked on. As far as defenses concerned, on a public easement or not, I'd have to check into that to verify that.
Okay.
Thank you, and so we can check out an update for the next.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And that was the only question out of all the department heads that I had, and some of those questions, and those were concerns from some of the citizens.
Along the same lines as to code enforcement, I think, echoing everyone else, I believe last month, we had 16 courtesy door hangers, no citations, no violations. This month, eight courtesy hangers, no citations, no violations. We got a lot of residents who are just abiding by the law consistently, yet everyone drives around, and all I get is complaints that this boat is parked out in front of this house, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and fences. I think we really need to maybe be a little more enforceable with some of these citations and violations, to make sure we're addressing all of these issues. Because although it's a small city, somehow, I don't think we only have eight infractions citywide. And I don't think the 16 last month were all addressed without any issues to this month. And I'm hoping these aren't carryovers.
I agree, and this will be worked on. So you will get a better report out of code enforcement.
And just to clarify on what Mr. McClary's saying, the process is, there's always a hanger first, and there's a timeframe for a remedy. So a lot of what the hangers are for have been remedied, then, I guess, is what's going on?
Yes, after speaking with code enforcement, they were remedied. Typically, it's a door hanger, and then it's a notice of violation, and that has not been addressed, so it's going to change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And I think if that's all our questions, before we turn it over, is there anything that any of the department heads would like to add? Chief Robinson?
We should be getting our three last cars tomorrow morning between 8:30 and 9:00. So that should complete the, finally complete the order of vehicles.
Good news, thank you. Fire chief is good. Anything else from building and code? Finance? And city clerk and management over here? Okay. With that, we're going to move on to the next item, which is the fire department engine, 41 surplus. I'm going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Again, when we had sent the truck up to La Calla to have it, you know, serviced its annual checkup, and its pump testing, it failed the pump testing, and then they did a deeper look into it and found the frame is rusted through, and it's not even usable or drivable. We had gotten an $11,000 bid on it before that happened, but we sent it to have it serviced and maintenance, we were going to hold on to it, but since that basically renders the fire truck not usable, we have to surplus it. Our only two options were to accompany that, forgot the name off the top of my head, but they specialize in fire trucks, but the problem is, once it got rendered useless, they don't want nothing to do with it other than to advertise it for us, but that's all they'll do, is it's like putting it on Craigslist for fire trucks. So we recommend taking it to Tampa Machinery Auction and auctioning it off and getting the highest bid we can for it.
With that, are there any questions and/or motions amongst council?
Motion to surplus engine 41.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. And move on to item eight, which is city hall surplus of equipment, and I'll pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I think we're getting close to the end for city hall property, but old adding machines and similar debris for your consideration. It's in the hallway, if you'd like to look at it, you've got pictures in your package, I believe.
I hope we're near then, you have more stuff than Best Buy.
Thank you. Looking for any commentary and/or motion?
Motion to approve city hall surplus equipment?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item nine, which is local mitigation strategy, I was going to pass that to Mr. Duke for introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The staff has been working diligently on getting our LMS document put together. It is a requirement of us, tells the state and the feds how we're going to manage mitigating flooding, floodwaters, buildings, and so on. So this is something I'm sure you've seen every year, and staff has it prepared, and would stand for your questions if you have them.
I have one question. Is there any major changes from previous 2020 to this year's?
As far as programs and projects, there are a couple differences. We currently have five homes right now, so the repetitive loss homes coming out of the flood zone have increased versus last year. We currently have five that are pending through FEMA grants currently, so those aren't on here, they'll be on next year's, because I can't put them in for this year. But the repetitive loss properties keep coming down, so that's a good. So we started at almost 208 homes, and we're down to 133. So we are moving in a right direction, moving up. We have some homes that are being lifted, and we have some that are going through, applying for FEMA grants, and we have some that are going through private funding. So those numbers will always alter year to year.
With that, looking for a motion and/or any further questions?
Motion to approve 2021 local mitigation strategy evaluation report.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. That closes out our council business, moves us to old business. I'm going to start on the other side of the council chamber with Councilman Cincella, for any old business.
I have nothing, thank you.
Councilman McClary?
Chief stole my thunder by telling us about the cars.
None here? Councilwoman Searle?
I think we've got it covered, thank you.
Vice Mayor Dimmer?
I have none, thank you.
Oh, there is one thing, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Fire department is still doing CPR on May 15th for all, for the public, anyone that's interested in at least learning how to do CPR powerfully, and some familiarization with AEDs, you could save a life, you show up.
Thank you. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.